Okay, so we're looking at the map on our.
Yes.
How's that?
Yeah.
So you have your, your, your house lot has basically a sort of large function in it.
Yes.
And then, and then the second lot is a piece behind it.
Yes, technically behind it, yeah. So if you're looking at it like, like this, like a piece of paper, this is my house here. And the other lot comes over here. And as you can see.
Is that map seventeen that you want to absorb?
I'm just looking, yeah.
Okay.
Um.
In my corner.
In my corner. See my handshake? Okay. Uh oh.
Hold the button down.
That's the hold.
And don't play that your eyes.
Okay.
Oh man. I'll call these others.
No, I think I just. I think it's right behind you.
Um, so currently, something like, uh, the land that we use, which is grassed and kind of has this line of uh, trees that run kind of like down here is, is like this, right? So there's trees here and then there's like clear grass here. This is a garden that we previously owners had. So the kind of line runs down here. So in terms of like privacy, you can, we'll kind of want to keep it, you know, the line as close to this as possible. So uh, if anyone, if we were to build on this or someone else is building this eventually, then, you know, they're not, they were here, of course, that's, this is our house. We're just trying to change that because the trees already run up here and provide privacy. This is the land we already use. This here is already kind of like trees and not used and, and just kind of overgrown. It's been that way since removed. This too is kind of overgrown. It's partially here, uh, and then like I say, trees are here. So we're looking to, I'm estimating that if I adjust this line here to like something like this, like this kind of mark.
So you would remain with a conforming lot. It has, it has its own entry off of Jeffrey Lane.
Yeah.
So.
What would the acreage be on both of those when you're treating?
This one would be pushing it to like, close to an acre, like point nine five or something like that. This one would be, I think, three, point three five. It gets to that fifteen thousand square foot like limit. So it's, I think it's zero point three five is what this would become. Um, you know, and obviously the, the, uh, the surveyor would, would guide us on exactly, you know, where this line is. I think I drew on the map, it being a bit closer to this line here.
It can still be illegal. It would be, it would be a conforming lot.
For that area.
That area.
Yeah.
Because it's that central water.
The central water, so, and, and we don't have any plans. We don't know what we're going to do with it yet. I mean, like, we just, we want to have the option of knowing that if we were to build on it or to sell it, then we have the privacy. Otherwise, we, we can't really do anything with it. And we, it's a lot of land. And we have a little kid and we, we barely use what we have. He's not an outdoor kid. You know, so.
So you're taking these two lots that you own and you're changing the lot line between them to make the, the lot of Jeffrey Lane still comply with R2 and your house just gets bigger.
This, this gets bigger, yeah. And, and for us, that's often like, well, that's fine, but we just want the privacy if we were to do some with it.
It's perfectly fine. I wouldn't create all objections from anybody on the planning board or anything.
So what you have, what you point of clarification is just, so like, I guess the point is, is that when we come to like adjust it, you know, we're guestimating that like this line here is good, but it could come over here a little bit. So we might need to take a little bit over here, you know, this area we don't use, just so we can kind of move this over just as far as we feel comfortable. So we're not getting this privacy, but it could be, you know, but it could be that we don't need to do any of that based on what the surveyor tells us, this, this kind of square footage.
As long as both lots are ready to perform to the zoning afterwards.
And one thing, I don't know if we all agree with each other, but one thing I have stumbled on is that this is from work. No, it doesn't.
Yeah, yeah, it does.
Yeah, but it's not, it's barely, it's a new line, be at a right angle.
Up to the string of.
That's, no, a right angle to the, uh, other, uh, property line. Do you follow me?
So what if possible, right? Yeah, I think.
So with the, the line that's there, you just move it straight over, don't angle it.
So that's tricky.
Okay.
Because if we move it straight over all the way up, because it is a large distance, we still are kind of like, can only go over this far. So my idea was to kind of like, come over as far as we wanted to, because again, this is wooded area. And then kind of have a bit of an angle here, but not have it so narrow that someone couldn't use this land for, you know, for whatever they want.
So you're, you're talking about taking that line and tipping it back to the right?
Yeah, there is a picture somewhere that I drew. I mean, it's not a great picture, but I kind of drew it, um.
So you're, 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 you're looking to add a lane to the rear, top of the rear of yours?
Just to, just because.
Right, not writing on each other, okay.
No, we're not. I think they're writing on the table.
So, okay.
Okay, yeah. And, and this, this, this is already here. This is already neighbors. That's already how that runs. So the idea is, I don't think we have to come this far over where this line is. I'm just trying to make sure. I think what would happen is we'd come over like this and this would go like back to whatever. But I'm, you know, I'm like open to suggestions. We just want to kind of make sure that this is basically in the realm of what we can have, you know? And the surveyor will tell us more what we can do.
Okay, cool.
And then.
As long as both lots conform to the zoning, are they, are you sure what you've done on your setbacks and?
The idea of that's just broken.
Yeah, this is Jeffrey Lane and.
So you're going to just need to make sure that you have enough, because there you have water, but not sewer. So you're going to just need to make sure that you have enough area for to reserve, you know, a septic and a reserve area.
I mean, I, I do have a question about that. And that is that I understand that like the number of stepsticks and all that affects the kind of action build. I'm not there right now, but the next step would be kind of another application around like.
Yeah.
The next step.
So this is what I really are concerned.
Yeah.
But it's what you should be aware of is like, if you chop into that property too much, you might be shooting yourself in the foot.
It doesn't mean I can develop.
Because you might be go to sell it later and find out that, yeah, it's got enough space, but because of whatever the ground is, maybe there's just, you know, because of the perk test or whatever, there's not, there's not a good for a septic reserve area. Because you've lopped off.
Yeah.
X number of feet, which wouldn't have been enough, but now that you don't have it.
You need, you need your primary set, uh.
Yeah.
Septic setup, but then you have to have a backup area also.
Okay.
Then you know you have enough.
But we're not going to address that as long as it's in code line. We're just throwing that out there. They could be shooting yourself in the foot.
Make sure the surveyor knows where the water lines are.
I'm sorry.
Because it becomes a less desirable lot.
Yeah, for that reason. And, and just, so there's regulations about like distance of like septic and let's see.
Well, you don't have to worry about a well because it's early water, correct?
Early mud.
Rolling that over, and the light gets online. So you're not, because if you had to put a well there, your septic has to be minimally a hundred feet from the well.
Okay, but I don't.
But you don't have to, but you're still have, no, could you get basically two, uh, leach fields up in there?
He's got to have two and a half acres, but he's on Muslim lot lines. No, 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 no. He's in R2 disparate.
But he's that central water, so it's less.
Not, it has letter.
It's a fifteen hundred square foot.
It's less than.
R2 zoning is less than an acre.
With a central water.
His grandfather then, his grandfather.
So anyway, so all we're saying to you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is though that configuration may cause you, it may cause you difficulty when it comes to laying out the house and, and the septic. So have that conversation and, and figure out how you want to do it. But however you want to do it, size wise, it works.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you want to do C P?
Do I need to move back to any, eventually come back to get that officially at, at, at surveyors? Um, so that, yeah.
So that looks like a birdland.
Right.
So give them a call.
I tried, is it still around?
Yeah, we have access.
All right, okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Hey, we're hoping right on the natural resource inventory renovation.
Oh, yes.
I think that under fifteen minutes, we'll really appreciate it.
We were planning on two hours.
That intermission.
Hell. I think we're here in different places, you know.
She thought you wanted to watch her hair.
Right.
He's making a presentation.
What do you want?
Uh, so keep that email up, but, uh, presentation right up. That's not blank.
In our, um, conservation advisory committee and.
Oh, okay, this is, this is a new application.
No, no.
Okay.
One twelve.
This is the explanation.
Four minutes.
Okay.
Hello, everyone. I'm, uh, Greg.
Yourself?
Right, thank you. Yes, Greg Tetral. Uh, I am the NRI project manager and a, uh, member of the CAC committee. And, uh, as if they've already alluded to, CAC has been spearheading a project for the last two years. I'm providing the natural resources inventory for the town.
Maybe keep those written.
Yeah.
Yes, and started, so hit the slideshow. Yep, yeah. Next slide.
Go on.
All right, here we go. So, uh, an MRI identifies catalogs and visually maps and describes the natural resources of our town. Uh, such as geology, uh, view sheds, the water resources, wetlands. All of the aspects of what makes up land and water in our town is part of the natural resources inventory. It provides, uh, the decision makers for the town, uh, very valuable resources and a way to make as informed of the decision as we can make regarding all sorts of things, whether it's policy decisions at the town board level or, um, site planning here. So. When we started this, uh, this project, uh, we had certain objectives in mind. Uh, the first is that it needed to be data-driven and scientifically based. And the result of, uh, the natural resources inventory is a set of maps and reports that go with the maps that describe, uh, background information that's necessary to understand the context and, uh, the actual data sources and so forth used to build the map. So that someone could either reduce it, update it, and more to the point, so that everyone knows exactly every bit that's on a map, where it came from, by its depth. So what we wanted to do is make sure that we had a source of truth for a whole lot of aspects about the natural resources in our town.
Really ready?
Uh, not ready yet. So an important aspect of the natural resources inventory is that this is not a policy document. This is facts. This is data, statistics and so forth. What we can use this for is the basis for something like comprehensive planning for the town or for other policy zoning decisions and so forth. It becomes a resource to essentially ground our decision making.
Great, can I ask a question?
Sure, at any time, people can ask questions.
So, I mean, so I'm assuming it's in a G I S system?
Yes.
So we can also layer it. So for example, the two applications today being the visual assessment.
Yes, I already know the answers to the questions.
Yeah.
Well, I was going to say, my question is basically how do we access the reports and the maps?
Yes, so, uh, there's, there's multiple layers here. So as part of this, uh, phase of the project, uh, which, uh, we are delivering as a set of apps and reports and so forth, uh, one of the things that we as a town get is all of the data and all of the systems used to create them, which means that not only do we get to use the maps that I've already been creating, we get to create more. We get the tools.
We get the tools.
Right? So it's a very powerful thing.
Have you checked if Ulster County or will they incorporate the data into early mapping?
Uh, so actually, uh, Ulster County is very anxious for us to hand over our data to them so that they can enhance their own uh, G I S systems. Right? So what we've done here is we've created a lot of data to describe things that had never really been described before. So take something simple like, no one ever mapped out the old railroad tracks that goes through the road.
The misty.
What's that?
Misty.
Well, uh, so there is a part that is there, that's still down railroad goes on. And then there are others that are no longer there. So all that's been added to, so we have it. Uh, as I said, it's the foundation for a comprehensive plan. Uh, part of this project also, we, uh, uh, we got a grant, uh, from the state, uh, to undergo a habitat wildlife study uh, where most of the acreage that, uh, we included in, in the study has been field verified.
What is the area of the study?
So the area of the study, uh, back in two thousand and eight, uh, everything, uh, below Old Hurley, uh, down to the border with, uh, goes without, uh, that is all done already. Uh, so this study basically looked at everything, uh, from the Hurley Flat School. So one of the things that we set out to do, since, uh, the town, uh, is, uh, this is really conservative, is to deliver this NRI at, uh, zero net cost. And just so you know how this was done, uh, the Habitat Wildlife Study was funded by a thirty-six thousand dollar grant from the state. Everything else that you'll see is created by volunteers here in the town.
So does the wildlife study include like the black bear population, the numbers, something like that?
So there will be, uh, it, it's not going to have numbers about black bears. It will have ranges of the black bears, for instance. So, or fat foraging areas or things like that.
Yes.
Oh, but in the last was that, uh, I think I mentioned that we created the infrastructure necessary to easily update the NRI. So this is a living document. Right? Data changes, things are updated, parcels are rewritten. It'd be great to keep this up to date. All right. So the overall scope of the project, uh, covered, uh, six main topic areas. Climate, physical setting, which is really about geology and soils, uh, water resources, which is probably the most involved section as it involves things like the drinking water resources we have in the town, uh, which is really about groundwater and the existing, uh, certain public systems that we have in place, uh, flood zones, overall water quality, and a really big one these days is wetlands. So in fact, wetlands was a big focus where we actually took apart the new twenty twenty-five updates to the regulations and created really useful maps around being able to determine if you are anywhere near the new rates.
Is it going to have the water districts and, and like which parcels are in the public water districts that exist in the town?
For drinking water, yeah.
Yeah.
It's in there. Uh, habitat wildlife, which I think I already mentioned, uh, and land use is another big one. So here, uh, you'll see zoning districts. Uh, when we reviewed the existing zoning map, uh, we actually saw that, uh, there are many errors in the zoning map that is currently in place. And that's aside from the fact that we haven't updated parcel lines on it since it was created. Uh, I worked with, uh, Paul to, uh, basically take care of another big issue, which was, so what is that escarpment thing anyway? So we managed to ground it in a definition in the state code about, uh, scarping theme and bringing it to steep slope, which means that the grade, it's a sustained grade of a fifteen percent or above.
A number, that's good.
Yeah, a number.
Yeah.
An actual number. I will tell you though, that, uh, one of the things that in the future, we really should consider is creating, uh, view sheds. Where you basically assign spots in the town and you just using G I S systems, you can calculate exactly what can be seen from there.
Really?
Right? And what that would do is you'd project it back down on top of the map and you end up with a line of, this is the area we need to concern ourselves with. Would that make it easier?
Yeah.
So the, your definition of the states of the fifteen percent of the escarpment, fifteen percent over how much distance, right? You must have that also as one of the factors?
Yes.
Do you know what it is?
Twenty feet.
Oh, twenty feet, yeah. So if it's fifteen percent or greater of the twenty feet, technically the scarpment.
Uh, so it's not an escarpment, but it needs the definition of what an escarpment it's assigned to. So.
What gets labeled?
Yeah, I, I'll be honest with you, the struggle really needs to be defined or actually it needs to be told and you should substitute it with steep slope.
And define it.
And define it, exactly.
Right. Because the steep level. Well, it doesn't matter what you call it, as long as you have a definition.
Correct. And, and.
So. One of the things you'll see. So one of the things I see in the map is, is, uh, the A four districts, uh, it's now two toned so that you can actually see where the areas that actually have those steep slopes in.
So we can locate that.
Yep, yep. So you would be able to determine very quickly the folks here, whether or not a visual assessment would be required on those grounds. Okay. Uh, did we move forward, Peggy?
I did.
Okay.
I mean, I figured we were done with this.
Yeah, so there was also cultural resources and, and, uh, we had aerial, uh, data that actually gives you summertime views and wintertime views.
How long you been doing this study?
Uh, so you've been working on it for two years?
It's a lot of work.
Yes.
Thank you.
I can't do.
Thank you, thank you.
Hours and hours.
All right. So what I wanted to do here is switch gears and, uh, so you had some idea what the scope was. Um, to basically sort of switch it to some of the main functions that you guys have to deal with, uh, so subdivision review. And when you're thinking about what's involved in that, what I did is I looked at the MRI of the things that we've already created, what could be helpful? So for ag districts, we have agricultural resources map and descriptions and everything that goes with it. You know exactly what.
So each that, so L U O five is a layer in a, in the map?
So it is a map.
It's a level, yeah.
Yeah. Correct. So you, you can think of these all.
So each one of those is an individual map and then it can be overlaid and, and we can see that.
Cool.
Very.
Okay. Uh, so historic sites, watersheds, um, so we have the boundaries for the New York City watershed, we know the process where they're at. Uh, we actually have the Ulster County and the state, uh, the, uh, the highest resolution elevation model that's available. So this is down to one square meter, plus or minus seven inches.
Okay.
Right? So one of the things that we were able to do is get super detailed about, uh, what's going on. So for instance, uh, the Tonsi Mountain. The listed height of Tonsi Mountain is based on the bold elevation model. We actually know that it's eighteen feet higher. There's a new one. Cool. But this is a resource that obviously elevation is a very important consideration in all sorts of decisions that you guys will be making. So just know that you have that data and it's part of the resource.
When's it going to be ready?
What's that?
When's it going to be ready?
So it's ready for you to look at right now.
Up in the next slide?
So an email got sent to everybody that had the links. Um, so we're just going to keep moving.
Drinking water said show aquifers?
Yes.
It does.
It does.
So we'll like just, it's like a plume or something. It would look like an underwater lake on the map?
Okay, I can see everybody's anxious now. So what we're going to zoom through this and we'll get to some actual.
Okay, yeah.
All right. So, uh, for site planning, here's some other things to do. Next slide. Um, just some highlights of the project. Uh, there were thirty map subjects.
Uh, we live in Elton, I mean, in Antifa, like.
All right. Uh, so we did it in two different formats and with multiple variations. So obviously for large scale planning, parcel lines are not that helpful, but for things that have to do with neighborhoods, parcels and so forth, we really need the lines. We revive up. Uh.
Yeah.
The high resolution maps, uh, they, if you were to print them, are three feet by quarter. So very easy. Which means that as a PDF file, you can bring in a parcel and see the details break down into the bit. In total, under twenty-two PDF maps were created. Uh, that's the most of any NRI in the Hudson Valley. Uh, thirty-three subject documents, which are background, uh, where all the data came from, how to use the maps and so forth were, were created and we've automated it. So that means that, uh, let's say Ulster County, uh, gives us a new parcel data set, uh, all maps get updated automatically. I mean, yeah, somebody has to press the button, but.
Right, the information later.
Yeah, which, which brings up a really important point is that, uh, most, uh, these families have undergone uh, the process of creating natural resources inventory, running to the problem of it's just as expensive to do the update as it is to create it in the first place. We didn't want to fall into that trap. We wanted to be able to create it and then at a very low cost and very timely fashion, update them. So.
Thank you, computer dude.
My python code.
No, thank you. This is so much fun.
Okay, so keep going, Maggie. So, uh, before we dive into maps, I might call it to action. Uh, the one thing that I really would look to the planning board for is one or two volunteers to, uh, start reviewing comments, feedback, all of the, uh, materials that we've created. Uh, we are, we are in, uh, the final comment period, which will run from now until about December. So it's a great time to get your feedback and any changes, incorporations. Um, if there are like major asks for like new data sets or things like that, uh, I don't think it'll make it into this round, but like I said, it's a living document, so it can be asked. There's going to be, uh, Joan is heading up, uh, the, the community event. We're going to roll out the NRI to the, to the community at large. Uh, so if, uh, everybody could represent, that would be awesome.
Will the public be able, like if somebody's doing a thirteen lot subdivision?
Everything you have, that, that is going to be available to everybody.
Oh, good. Some consultants, whatnot, everybody.
Right. Right? So figure this is public information.
This is very cool.
Okay, let's go.
I now know what you're talking about.
All right, so actually, why don't we, uh, what are people most interested in right now? Land use, uh, water resources, drinking water, and.
Visual assessment.
Visuals? Okay, so let's go to land use, L U O one. So close this down, Peggy, and then go to the links.
Land use what?
So let's go to land use link right there. Bring that up.
Oh.
And let's, uh, scroll down a little bit. Oh, you want to open it up in, uh, a separate?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna, um.
You should be able to just click on the thing on it. See the little icon? Yep. Direct.
I'm trying. Keeps going past it.
Yeah.
Yeah, see, it wants, it's, the adobe isn't playing something happened after. This guy uses.
Okay, anyway, just scroll down then.
Okay.
So here's the zoning districts map, so.
Can you show us where that, like at the A four, where the overlays are visually accessible?
Wonderful.
Yeah, so, uh.
It isn't it?
So as you see in the A four districts here, so down here, here, if you see there's, this is a two-tone.
So dark green and white.
Dark green. So if you look at the. Dark green, so if you look at the visual assessment overlay, here's the dark green, here's the light green. So the light green means that there's no steep slope. The dark green means that there is a steep slope, as in defined by fifteen percent grade over fixed distance.
Doesn't mean it's visible from the local specific location, but it does mean.
Okay, uh, so, you know, I think the, uh, some of the folks that were here were down, down in this area. Right there. So that was that lot, and you can see there's no steep slope there.
Fifty percent on twenty feet, it's a three foot drop.
Right, so.
Every twenty feet is a three foot.
So you're talking about Ryan Moody who was just here? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Greg, is that what you were saying, he's right there?
So again, you keep in mind that this is, uh, this is something that we need to be asked as the new map for, uh, zoning. In order to be useful to you, obviously it's just their guide right now. But as you can see, and just, we can also change the definition. So if we want to increase the amount of, um, the span, so for instance, not twenty feet, but let's say we wanted to make it a hundred. Or we wanted to change it to twelve percent, not fifteen percent. These are very easy computations to make, honestly, it's just me typing in different numbers and a new map that's generated. So it's really just about getting really clear about what we want. Getting the numbers so that everybody else knows what they are and then everything becomes much clearer. Okay, um, what else would you like to do? Fair enough.
It said water, water, oh, water, yeah, water.
Oh, yeah, so let's get to the water resources.
I could tell you've got, it's mapped well because you've got my, my pond and my weapons. I can see it.
Oh, the loyalty, that was this, this email you sent us.
So scroll down to the first map, Maggie.
Does that tell you if it's a pond or a wetland?
Yes. So this is the drinking water map and, uh, these light blue areas, uh, don't zoom in, zoom out, Maggie. Okay, just stay there for a second. So these light blue areas in the aquifers.
Okay, so you've got the O'Haile as, as that's a, that's an area of concern.
Yes, and so what these are generated from is, uh, Ulster County track wells. So the light blue are the aquifers. So you can see them and they were actually mapped by, uh, two different, uh, entities. One, one was, uh, an aquifer that was hired in the early two thousands by the town that mapped the ones up in West Hurley and the other ones are coming from, I believe it's the USGS.
So the blue area is good, white area is, oh, the red area, okay.
The red areas represent, uh, areas that have, uh, chronically low yields. So, and I will tell you, we, we found some very fascinating things. So, um, for these chronically low yields, there was one attribute that kept popping up. And I don't know if you see this kind of squiggly gold line that's going here, but that series, it's highlighting the crest of the boundary between watersheds within the town. So not surprisingly, the areas that are nexuses of these watershed crests are the places that tend to have difficulty finding water in the bedrock. The area underneath, or the area of O'Haile Mountain, uh, is particularly problematic because not only do you have this watershed crest that's there, uh, there's also what's called an acquitard underneath it. Believe it or not, Marcella Shale actually extends, uh, from the northwest all the way down and prominently extends up into this area, and if you went to the geology, that can be seen.
This is geology?
Uh, so basically what that does is it prevents the lateral flow of water in the, in the bedrock. So that means when you have a lot of people who are drawing well, water out of O'Haile Mountain, there's no good way to get water to laterally come back in. It does, but very slow. So over time, uh, what's happened is that, uh, let's say that just extends to the top of the head of, uh, of a well, of O'Haile Mountain. Let's say it started three hundred feet down, it's now like six hundred fifty feet down. And that's over twenty years.
Which do you flip on if I'm in geological maps?
So that's in physical settings. And you'll see, uh, bedrock geology, superficial geology, soils.
You know what I'm doing tonight?
Oh, that's exciting.
I'm so excited about this.
If all it's made will be the instruction for locals to.
Absolutely, absolutely, Maggie, if you scroll down some more. So here is the narrative that goes with it. This tells you everything that you're seeing, the background behind it, keep going, Maggie.
And all of this was ultimately gonna go live, I'm assuming on the town website?
Yes, so keep going. So it gives you background on that, gives you map discussion and then all the data sources that go with it.
Yeah, fabulous. How long have you been working on this?
Years.
Long time.
And he's doing most of the work. He's getting, he's a producer.
Can you go back to that main part of the town, the main, the whole manor?
You know, one minute of DUCs?
Yeah. Yeah, that's it. Okay, right there, right about there.
Yep.
Out on that point, there's my house.
Oh.
Now, down from that, we just accepted a, uh, we just gave the visual assessment to Moody, to another Moody.
He's in construction.
What?
He's in construction, we're watching with our telescope.
Yeah, well, he's, he's well underway with his construction. He, he had, uh, Titan blow blowers come in, they drilled them two wells, six hundred feet deep, dry.
Dry?
Can you imagine?
Yeah.
Well, you see the crest right there?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's, alright, so this is a cluster.
I don't know what he's gonna do.
Cluster right there, so it's why we put it on the map, so that you would know, that somebody would know that.
You're gonna hide.
Now, I will say that at nine hundred feet, you have that.
So that, that squiggly line is the watershed boundary?
Yes.
And you're saying that near that?
What we found is that, uh, wells that are drilled in and around those areas.
Squiggly brown lines.
Yep, have difficulty finding water.
Because the water's going from one direction to another direction.
It's actually fascinating because the geology of the town, it's, uh, you know, glaciers, uh, rock. And the way it, uh, lays is that it actually wants the force, as water comes down, it wants to laterally go out like this, which means that the water is actually pushing away in this direction. So I would suspect that people who drill here would have a better time than people who drill here.
Which is very nice.
Seeing a jump in water before you build a mile or two off?
So I'm, uh, like, yeah, to the big blue wetland, then the little teeny, what? Little teeny on, up on the, no, no, over there. Okay. I'm just right here, uh, right, I'm right here. I literally have, which is interesting based on what you're saying with that line because I have one well that is literally, let's say fifty feet from another well that got twenty-five gallons of minute at like fifty feet and the one on the other side. And there is a draw, there's a break in the bulge there, the one on the other side had to go down. For, I mean, you know, like five or six gallons a minute on, at two hundred feet. But that's an interesting, you know, thought about being close to those lines and how that changes where you're.
Yeah, yeah.
The last question.
Who started that, you guys are doing this, this is like phenomenal.
The CAC?
The CAC.
So.
So maybe I'll get you on.
No, 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 so this is quick. So unconsolidated aquifers are, you can figure this water hitting the ground, seeping into the ground. And then eventually it reaches to a place where it breaks down.
Because you need this.
Okay. That's unconsolidated, meaning that there's no cap on the cap. Okay. Consolidated aquifers, uh, when, uh, you, this is, uh, you, you've probably heard the term artesian well. Alright, so consolidated aquifers, the water's coming down in a different place and in the strata of the bedrock, there's some barrier that keeps the water from up top from actually filtering through. But the way the strata works is that water over here ends up seeping laterally down, usually at a higher elevation. Which means that if you drill, just the first part, you're a non-consolidated aquifer. You go through the barrier, it leads to the next part, that's a consolidated aquifer. If the water's coming from a higher elevation, it means there's higher pressure. Because as soon as you drill the well down there, it comes shooting out. That's interesting.
But I noticed there's, there are no consolidated aquifer that are in your key.
We do not have the geology to support that.
Okay.
What's your background?
I'm a computer guy.
Thank you. Pleasure to be joined.
Wow.
Our benefit. Okay, cool.
So I encourage you to take a look, uh, I had my call to action. Uh, send comments, feedback to the NRI at, uh, kind of early dot org.
And as you said, it's a living document, it's a living document, so, I mean, obviously if you'd like to have comments sooner, but it's almost like Wikipedia where it can be edited, not by everybody, but on an ongoing basis.
Yeah, like one of the things that, you know, without scope for what we're doing this time around, but for instance, we could be great if you had a map to know exactly when you needed to get the Ulster County involved. Certain things like the proximity to, I don't know, state road or county road or things like that. So you can create a map that basically outlines all of those places where you need to get the county involved. Interesting.
Yeah, for the size of the project.
Maybe somebody knows this, um, is there a way to know, like, I have a house on Sporl, oh, well, great. I have no idea, you could, is that like public knowledge somewhere?
If, if the well driller, over there to point in time when they had to get a permit, then it'll be on record.
It should be on your permit, the beginning of the house. Yeah, that would, that would be interesting, um, annotations.
Yeah, so, uh.
To have average well depth, you know, points or something.
And, and that's what some of the data is from, so we actually had to go and dig out, uh, records for Ulster County for certain areas, it was just too intensive.
That was like a, a joint project, really, and what's up? It was a.
A cross-boundary, it's geographic.
That's when we changed the sound.
Will the general community, I mean, really, have a plan to look at the highest look?
They're gonna open that up into the general.
Thank you, thank you. Same.
We have to thank.
Very, thank you all very much.
Have a new toy.
Thank you. Hopefully it'll make your jobs easier.
Oh, yeah.
I miss you both. And now, we're around.
We're on, too. I'll play, we'll make a day.
Sounds good.
Alright.
Good night, everybody, alright? Do you wanna adopt those, or do you, do you guys wanna do?
Or any motions?
Yeah, okay.
And we need at least a little bit of discussion on, um, our November and December meetings so that it can go in October to the later, our people will get. Our, November meeting is Thanksgiving Eve, or the September meeting is, you see? Will I ever say what I was doing before?
Yeah.
Okay, so the Thursday. And the dead ones, we just back up to, it's perfect. That's all I.
All those favor, aye, aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
You get an award for the longest, um, guest.
Really? Well, I've learned a lot, I can go to a great.
Great, it's something you're, that's a board member if you're interested.
Okay. And why not help?
We'll be losing, we'll be losing.
Yes. Um, so who's your favorite attorney to use? The Matt and Trust? You're asking the wrong guy, favorite what? Attorney.
For what?
Could you just help me sort through all this crystal fill covenants and updates and varying?
Um, I would say.
Favorite, are you now like an OC more of?
Yeah, it's.
Oh, yeah, and Oriela.
I don't know.
Oriela, how do we do that?
Oriela would be the best guy.
Um, but.
Uh, Matt, you announce Kraus County, just partner. Only kid.